Yeah.
First item we'll be talking about is employee handbook update. There aren't that many right now, more cleanup. Something that we added was language regarding C P D and oil products into the alcohol and support use. And testing policy, just because they're not written related by that beginning, we want to include that one. Handbook. We are revising language with the introductory theory for new hire law personnel. Just changing it to six months. It just don't work for our other areas, other employees. And if they went to the academy, it'd be six months from when they. And then just clarifying language on access to either before or after a call in. So if someone has something scheduled, it's fine, they still receive the call they pay for the formal about six. And they don't need a proxy note or anything like that, they would have received that call they paid. And then additionally, we are looking at based off of staff feedback is. Call they pay in general and how we compensate it. So with the Fair Labor Standards Act, you don't have to count. Call they pay is hours worked. But we run into some issues with parking boys three during winter when they're doing snow removal. Or utilities operations when there's a water leak on a holiday week. They don't get compensated overtime. She sort of researching sort of other ways to compensate for it. And reasoning out to other cities in the area to see what they're doing. And if anything's needed, we bring that forward before the October. So any feedback, any staff, any questions? Well, over them, but again, these are pretty minor.
Yeah, I have a question. It's about the the changes to the on the on the police side. So it went, it was kind of confusing anyway in the beginning, but it went, it really went down a lot all the way to six months. Is that, is there a reason for that? I mean, as far as the drop, I think it's a lot cleaner now. I just wondered what the reason is for the reduction.
We're all, but part of that was the. Originally it was a year and it just was a lot longer than the other employees. So I'm wondering if that's what it came from and if we have a field training program. So they're still getting trained the same amount. It's just shortening that time a little bit and making it less complicated with the introductory period.
Okay.
That brings it more in line with where the other employees are, as Gina pointed out. But it does not mean that employees aren't after that introductory period, there aren't continual review of things that are going on and 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 feedback and communications. And in fact, the police department does kind of do that more formally on a on a consistent basis.
So where it says six months after the successful completion of the field training program, about how long does that field training program last?
It's three phases.
Okay.
Six weeks, four weeks.
Okay.
Is the normal F T O program.
That's the normal F T O program. And if it has to be extended based on that review, then that's extended based on on and and that's on the, there are multiple sergeants involved in that review. Excuse me, multiple F T off, field training officers, yeah, for each of those phases.
So when you're looking at that, that's like another sixteen weeks potential if everything goes good.
Sixteen weeks minimum, if it has to be extended, it's, yeah.
So that's still a pretty long period of time. Okay, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is employee compensation in retirement. So each year we look at our pay ranges.
Hey Gina, I don't mean to interrupt you, but the mic went away online. You were good, but we don't have a mic.
All right, can you hear me now? Okay. All right, um, so the C P I, right now we have budgeted it's a three percent cost of living adjustment to the pay ranges. And how we do this is we adjust our whole entire compensation plan. And that would be, so if we had an opening, it would be adjusted to that new rate. And then employees who are currently employed would be adjusted three percent. So they're moving up in that range as well, so you don't have as much compression with new hires. And then each spring, we typically perform performance evaluations and that is tied to the merit piece of our compensation plan. And we normally budget in the range of two to three percent of an increase. And we've moved to more of a merit pool, which is budgeted around a hundred thousand a year. And those typically, those happen in May. So employees typically have an increase in November for the C P I and then in May for the merit. And then some additional discussions we've had lately is for retirement with the Missouri Loggers Program. We're currently at the L seven level. And in this year's budget, employees went from the four percent contribu- contributory rate to two percent. And at the board retreat, we talked about including a three percent pay range adjustment for November one and then a merit pool of a hundred thousand for May. And during that budget retreat, you guys asked, okay, well, what do employees want to see? What are their priorities? So we did send a poll survey to employees. We got approximately about a fifty percent response rate for them. And then Cynthia and I have been meeting with departments last week and this week, just to reiterate the survey results and. You know, discuss the options and see if this is what they really want. So based on those survey results, we saw, sorry, my page just got mixed up.
What, what did you say the response rate was?
It was thirty six employees, so it was right over fifty percent.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so they responded that they would like to see a mix of compensation and retirement enhancements. So based on those survey results, we are making the recommendation of keeping the C P I adjustment at three percent. And then looking at a loggers enhancement of going to the L twelve level, which would increase. The one point five percent benefit multiplier to one point seven five. So how loggers is calculated? It is your three years of your highest salary times years of service multiplied by that benefit multiplier. So if you increase it from one point five to one point seven five, you're going to have a better retirement at the end. And we are making that recommendation because we budgeted in the draft budget around a hundred thousand total. And this L twelve loggers program would cost around a hundred and six thousand. So it'd kind of be a wash. And that's why we really want to talk to employees about how they feel, because if they get a three percent increase for the pay ranges. And we move to this L twelve program, we would move their contributory rate back to four percent. So it'd be a net increase of one for the year.
So it, excuse me, the, the L twelve was a hundred and six thousand, what was the L eleven if we kept that?
There wouldn't be a budget impact for if we kept it the same. It would be already rolled into.
Okay, we already had.
It's our current level.
And just for clarification, it's really weird. It's not L eleven, it's L seven. Their numbers are, and the best is an else, L six.
Yeah.
So it's, just ignore their numbers, the one and a half percent multiplier versus the one point seven five percent multipliers probably.
Okay, and how does that compare with the other similar cities as far as what what they're at?
Yeah, so similar cities, back in the border treat, we had that comparison. I don't have it in front of me, but most cities are moving towards the L six or the L twelve program. Where if they're currently at the L seven, they're moving to more where the employee doesn't pay anything. The city, the city pays it all.
If I recall from that information, we are the only city right now in that group that we surveyed that is at the one point five percent multiplier and employees are still contributing.
Yep.
And the one point five is many have moved to the, the L six that we've talked about, the highest level is a two percent. Multiplier, which is the cost at this point, we can't, we can't look at. So this is incremental steps.
And when we had a meeting with the loggers representative, she kind of explained it that each level in the program is a step. So it's better to move one step at a time than do a big jump because it's going to cost so much. Because you're, when you make an improvement to loggers, you're buying up all of your employees. So if someone's been here for seven years at the one point five level, they're going to be bought up to the one point seven five. And same with, you know, we've had an employee who's here for forty years, it's buying up his time to that one point seven five. So that's why those, there are costs associated with moving up levels. And again, we've been discussing with the employees about their feedback. We have two more meetings and then based on those discussions, we'll have a better idea of how the employees feel about these proposed changes. And then can come up with a better discussion at the August meeting when we bring the budget forward. And part of that discussion with the merit piece is we're looking at moving to more of a professional development plan for employees. So rewarding them on certifications, increased education and moving away from the performance evaluation piece. Just because as local government, it's becoming harder and harder to. Pick out one person's performance versus someone else for like a water leak. We expect all of our employees to respond. So it's hard to say, oh, well, thank you for responding to the water leak when. As of working in the water department, they would need to do that, so. Coming up with ideas and as we have more of a concrete plan, we would bring that at a future work session. So any feedback that you guys have so far? And then again, we will be bringing back more information at the August meeting.
Gina, I, I appreciate you reaching out to the employees and getting their feedback. It sounds like we'll have a better idea of that in the August meeting, but thank you for presenting this and and. I know it's tough, I'm sure different seasons of life or stages of life in their career. You know, some would want more on the retirement and less or deferred compensation. So I'll be interested to hear those results.
Thank you.
So on the Consumer Price Index Adjustment, everyone will get that, correct?
Yes.
And is everybody enrolled in loggers?
Yes, every employee is mandatory enrolled in loggers.
So in essence, they get a three percent increase, but then a four percent in loggers. But that's their choice to do that, is that correct or what?
No, no, loggers, they participate. And so this, the thing, the, the issue that we want to ensure we're having clear communications with staff, because the overwhelming response of those who responded. Was supportive of moving up to that next multiplier level. To make that happen, we have to go back to employees contributing more. So effectively, they get a three percent increase in November. And then in January, they would, now this is pre-tax, so but they would go back to contributing two percent. So effectively, they're about a one percent increase. Now, one of the things we've talked about in these meetings, we've had three meetings now, we've got two meetings left, but are, the majority of our employees are in the next two meetings. So we'll have better feel. We, one of the things we talked about is the survey addresses the fact that people have expressed they'd like to see enhancements to, you know, kind of blend. The change that we made to loggers in January of this year. Was an enhancement in terms of it reduced the amount they're contributing. It didn't change the multiplier, it didn't change anything else. So it really was an enhancement to compensation. It was more money in their pockets. Now, some people took that opportunity to take what they saved there and put in their voluntary contribution to a four fifty seven plan, which is like a four oh one K. Public employees can't participate in a four oh one K, but we can participate in a four fifty seven. We provide that for employees, it's voluntary only. Some employers provide a match to that. And that was one of the questions on the survey. Would you be interested in, in that piece? That got, I think that was number four of the options, it got very little traction. So trying to look at what works best for folks. As we've had conversations, we've had a lot of people. The feedback we've received on both sides, one is, you know, costs are going up big time right now, so I need the money in my paycheck. Retirement's a ways off, which would be an anticipated comment. We've also had feedback that costs are going up, costs are going to keep going up. I'd like to have it in retirement so that I have more when I retire. We've also had comments of, I don't know what, you know, I'm young, I don't think I'm going to have social security, so I got to figure out the best way to enhance my other retirement options. And we've had conversations about the fact, all these, anything that's taken out of an employee's paycheck is pre-tax, so that, you know. It has an impact. I think those are the highlights of those discussions. And as I said, we've got more meetings this week and and we'll have that information then to bring back.
So I'm kind of confused, because on this one page, it says cost to change to the higher benefit are outlined below. In addition, such an enhancement to retirement would require a change back to four percent employee contribution to the plan.
So it's back to four percent. Right now, they are contributing two percent.
Two percent, and then they're going to go to four percent.
They'll go to four percent, so they are, it's employee contributing, not employer.
Well, okay, I may have said it wrong. So they're going to get a three percent raise through the C P I, but then they're going to turn around and put four percent into loggers?
Two more percent.
Since they're already, so they're already doing two.
So it'll take, so it'll be two more.
So it's a net of one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Thanks for the.
Yeah.
It's, it's a lot, it's a lot too.
Math is math. Yeah, no, it's, it's a lot in the, in the loggers formula is, you know, everything is moving, moving parts there.
I mean, I, I support loggers, I mean.
I need some clarification too. So we start off with the C P I of three percent in November. A merit increase of four percent and you said something about January of.
No.
What did you say?
Typically, in the past, we have done merit increases, but we're proposing instead of using that money for merit. Using that pool of money to buy up the loggers retirement program.
That's a hundred thousand and then the six thousand additional, additional that you talked about, okay.
Right.
Thank you.
Right. And that's total budget. So it's all funds, so it's utility funds and general funds. So just so we, it has that impact and there's, there's a proportionate impact there, but.
And that would take place in January?
Yes, January one. The loggers buy up with, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. And also I do want to note that the, that one hundred six thousand dollar number isn't, is an estimate as of May of this year. Based on kind of what, what they would have looked at a year ago. They, every year, we can ask for actual cost estimates that are free of charge, but we had to wait till Ja- July one to make that request. So that may change slightly and we hope to have that, will we have that in time for the August meeting?
I believe though, if it sticks to the thirty day schedule, we could have that for the.
Gina has requested that already. So, so that one oh six is also something that may change slightly. And that's based on, you know, they do actuarials and looking at employees, years of service, all of those things, so that they cover that buy up piece.
One more question. Yep, like you're going to do away with merit if this moves forward. You were talking about how to maybe reward those employees who really go above and beyond.
Right.
I don't know what you would look at and what that would cost or anything. So should you be looking at a budget line item for like those bonuses or whatever they would be called?
That's one of the things that we'd need to look at and, yeah, yes.
Any other questions or comments on that?
All right.
Okay.
Any concerns about the way we're progressing so that we just kind of know that this is the way to move forward through August?
It's employee driven change, so it's.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Ready, Stephen? You've got all your charts in front of you. Be the, be the utilities one. So it'd be. I'll try not have it open.
All right, well, it's a pleasure to come to you tonight to discuss another portion of the budget process. Tonight in the work session, we'll cover first our fiscal year twenty twenty four proposed changes to the city's utility rates. And following this presentation, we'll look at the rest of the schedule of fees and the proposed changes to that schedule. So with that, we'll start off, we'll take a look at our, our utility rate changes for fiscal year twenty twenty four that staff are coming to you to propose. Before we get into the numbers, I just want to mention, when the city starts looking at its utility rate adjustments and what we're going to propose to the board for, for changes. We do have a few steps that we go through when we actually, before we actually arrive at the proposal. Those steps start with a utility rate model update, which begins around April and May of twenty twenty three. If you recall, last year in twenty twenty two, we had Raffatellus Financial Consultants come out to the city of Smithville. And provide a utility rate model for us. And fortunate for our department, we can take that model and put updates into that model and get it ready for. Kind of the, the five to ten year rate projections that we can then share with you. So we spent time in May updating the model. Once the model's updated, we share that with public work staff. Share that with our utilities superintendent, operations manager, public works director, city administrator. And then at that point, once we've reviewed that model, looked at all the proposed requests, capital projects that we've inputted, we come to you with the rate projections. After the review with the board, ultimately that will result in approval of some sort of utility rate adjustment in conjunction with the budget process in October. Getting into the budget for the water and wastewater sewer fund. It's the budget and the requests in the budget and the capital projects that really drive our request for increase in the utility rate. So on the slide before you, I've put some notes about some of the items that have been requested by the public works department, specifically the utilities division. Really that first check, we've talked about it from June twentieth, we have ongoing water and sewer, quote, I would call them pay as you go, cash funded projects. That are recommended from our water and wastewater master plans. We'll look at the C I P in a moment, but we have a pretty long list of projects that we're continuing to work on and will fund in fiscal year twenty twenty four. In our second check, we also have a number of debt finance projects. And so that includes our plant expansion prog- projects that we'll get ready for as well as one hundred and forty fourth street west bypass and lift station projects. Those debt finance projects will, will need revenues to pay for the principal and interest for those projects. The last few checks are specifically referencing requests that have come from the utilities department. It includes expenses for both their operations maintenance and their personnel budget as well as repairs to their equipment. In this budget process, the utilities department has requested an additional wastewater treatment plant operator. Some background from the staff report, the staffing for the wastewater treatment plant has not been increased since two thousand and four. So it's been nineteen years since an F T, F T E has been added. When utilities came to Cynthia and myself with the request, they noted that the position would work towards improving lift station maintenance. Sewer camera and videoing hydrant valve exercising and the gathering of G I S location data. As the city continues to grow with population, daily wastewater workloads have increased and it calls for an additional F T E. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to knock us off the PowerPoint. I didn't get it anything. That's the slide, sorry about that, okay. There's also additional requests that have come from the utilities department, includes a sewer jetter machine, which can be used to clean clogged sewer lines, perform preventative maintenance. And it helps clean up streets after water breaks occur. The current sewer jetters over twenty years old, it's logged over one thousand one hundred hours of runtime. And it's required for pump rebuilds, so it's been a costly piece of equipment to continue to maintain. Therefore, we have a request coming in from utilities to replace that. You also have other repairs and maintenance items. It also includes, the requests also include lab equipment down at the water treatment plant and lighting and H vac system replacements. So all of those operational requests are put into the utility rate model in this year's budget and becomes the basis for developing rates. On June twentieth, we looked at the five year C I P for the water and sewer fund. We talk about fiscal year twenty twenty four there and all the projects that, that we have to find a way to fund. In green are the projects that are new to the five year C I P and specifically includes. Construction and engineering for lift station, bar screen, projects that, that are going to require funding and rate adjustments. The rest of the C I P, especially in the out years, when you look at fiscal year twenty six through twenty eight, we get into some pretty financially heavy projects. It includes, you can see there, engineering for the water plant expansion and construction for the wastewater treatment plant. Those projects, you know, you can see there with the plant expansion, it's about a six million dollar expenditure over two years. And then as we get into twenty twenty eight, we have to be ready financially viably to pay for that first phase of the water plant expansion at seven and a half million dollars. So the rate increases, again, really to summarize the rate increases that we're proposing tonight. Get us ready financially in a position to support those projects, which are now about four years out. Talk, talking about the long term, utility fund cash flow. Pictured here is a snapshot of the operating reserve for the fund coming directly from the water and sewer model. The dark blue line that runs on the bottom of the graph is the target reserve, so that's where we want our financials to be each year. When Cynthia, myself, Chuck and others sat down and looked at our rate projections. The way the model's set up right now puts us in a pretty good position where it balances a couple of factors. It first ensures that we're going to have enough money to retain reserves, but it does not allow the fund to build up a major amount of funds. You see in the graph, it does grow when you get to twenty thirty, thirty one, thirty two. You can ignore those columns being eight to ten years out, we don't have projects slotted in going into those years yet. But as we approach those years, we'll, we'll get those years completed. So with that, we'll go into the proposed changes and I'm going to take you through the proposed changes to the water rates and then we'll look at the wastewater rates. So first, we'll take a look at the water rates here. On the first row, we have the monthly fixed charge in your utility bills, each. Each city of Smithville utility customer pays a monthly fixed charge to have access to the water system. That charge is $12.78 a month. And the proposal would be to increase that by 15% to $14.70 a month. For seniors, they have a 15% discount that they enjoy right now. They have a current rate of $11.77. We're proposing that that 15% discount is retained. So if you do your math, 15% discount off $14.70 would be $12.50. So seniors would see about an 80, little less than 80 cent increase per month on the fixed charge. Proposed changes also include changes to the water volume rate. The monthly water volume charge right now is $9.04 per thousand gallons used. 15% increase would put that rate at $10.40 per thousand gallons used. And then below we have the wholesale water rate, which is the rate at which water is sold to public water supply district number eight. Their current rate is $5.40 per thousand. 15% increase on that would put their rate at which we sell water to them to $6.21. Next set of changes we'll review would be the fixed rates for our wastewater portion of the bill. The wastewater monthly fixed charge is a little bit higher than the water charge at $18.43. The proposal would be to increase that by 15% to 2119 per month. And then on the senior side, the 15% discount would be retained. Their rates would go from $16.02 to 1801. And then on the volume wastewater rate, that charge right now is $7.69 per thousand gallons used. Proposal of 15% increase would put that rate at $8.84 per thousand gallons used. The last proposal would be a change to sewer only customers that are outside the city limits, but have City of Smithville services. There's really only a handful of accounts here. If you recall from previous budget presentations, our office services over 4,200 utility accounts. And when we run our service report for this group of customers that have the $64 flat monthly charge, there, there's only about 64, 65 accounts that have this fee. By ordinance, we charge 1.5 times the average wastewater bill for this account. And so with our new rates in place, and we'll look at our average bill here in a few slides. We would propose that charge to be $81.68 per month. Any questions so far on those water and wastewater proposed fees?
Stephen, do you have a total, like a combined of, you know, the, the impact as far as what it is now? And, and thank you.
We will. Yeah, that, that's a great question. Alderman Russell, we're going to look at that in a couple of slides.
I have a question. Yeah. I have a question back to the reserve that, that screen there that, and you don't have to go back to it, but I'm just curious in there and we're talking about future financing like that debt service. How much do we have in certificates of participation right now for the water treatment plant or water?
What's our outstanding balance and debt service for COPs? I have the number memorized off the top of my head. I know we started, I think the total amount of debt issued was around eight or nine million dollars for the sewer interceptor project. So we've paid on that debt now for five years. I have to double check the balance. I think it's somewhere between six and seven million.
Do you know about how many more years? We have, how many more years there are on that?
It's a, it's a 20-year note. So it should, it should take us through 2038 on that, on the debt service. Yeah. With principal, principal and interest, yeah, the principal payment's around 140 and then we have interest costs on top of that for that debt.
I just thought of that now. I should have, when I was reviewing it, sent that to you ahead of time. So you could have actually had that. So I apologize for not asking sooner. But thank you.
And so again, that's part of the rate increases are going to pay for those assets. 144th Street West bypass and the lift station project to finance those projects would require the issuance of debt. And so as times goes on to pay for that principal and interest, the rates need to be structured accordingly to do that. Okay. The next portion we'll look at is the proposed changes to the sanitation fees. Just as a reminder to the board, the city contracts with the GFL to provide trash service to the citizens of Smithville. And so when we go to do our rate proposals regarding trash service, we enter into some negotiations with GFL. And just want to cover this real quick. When we talked to GFL about the rate increase, our current trash charge is $19.29 a month. They came back to us with a proposed increase of 5% on the contractual rate. And so when it comes to the customer cost, we're proposing to do a 4.8% increase to $20.16. There's a very slight difference between that and what the city pays, which is about 38 cents, but it's that 38 cents that pays for the household hazardous waste program each year. The senior discount is right now $16.40. Through those negotiations with GFL, that rate would stay at $16.40, which is a, a great plus. And then furthermore, in negotiations, you see in the staff report, we did request an additional bulky item pickup. Through those negotiations, the agreement was to provide a smaller bulky item event with a date to be determined. So providing more opportunities for citizens to get rid of those bulky items besides the, the two standard pickups that they enjoy right now. Sorry about that. Why the PowerPoint? Alderman Russell, you asked about this a couple of minutes ago, and this is a graph showing the average monthly bill over time. Just want to point out that the assumptions for the gallons used on your water and wastewater is listed on the slide. If you have your packet open, you can see that. Wastewater assumptions about 3,700 gallons, water is 4,300. So if you're looking at this graph as a citizen, you'd want to make an adjustment depending on your own usage. But you could map this on to your usage and see what your bill would look like. For these purposes though, there's five different colors shaded on the chart. It shows the fixed charge for both water and wastewater in the dark colors. And then the lighter colors are the volume charge and then the trash charges at top. On the right-hand side, you can see the average bill as we go over time, it's increased with rate adjustments. If you take those assumptions on usage, when you look at November 2022, that average bill would be $118.83. The proposed rate changes would take that monthly bill to $134.63.
And that would be for someone who's not getting the 15% discount. That's just the regular.
That's a, that's a good point. This chart is reflecting the regular rate. One thing we could do going forward in the budget process is also build this chart for, with the senior fixed charge.
That might be good to have there on the end.
Yeah.
That could look like.
And since we introduced, we introduced the senior charge last year in the budget cycle. So what you would see in that case is that rate starting out in 2022 as it wasn't available before then. It came out of last year's retreat. So. Okay. Sure.
Stephen, quick question for you. Do you, do we know of those roughly 4,200 users, just a, a number that the average is 4,360 gallons? Do we know for sure kind of what the average bill? I guess you, you're kind of stating it that the average bill right now is 11883, at least as of last year. Correct? Is that what you're saying? Or just the average on 4,360 gallons? What I'm trying to get at is what is the average of the number of 4,200? What is the average of, of those 4,200? Is it roughly that or is it more or less?
So, okay. So the, the answer to the question, I think what you're asking is what's the average usage of the city? And so what this graph did to show, the, the way those numbers are developed is we go into our financial billing software and we select three, three quarter inch and one inch residential meters, which is pretty much if you're living in the city of Smithville and you're a resident, you're either going to use a three quarter inch or one inch meter. And we select those two meters for both seniors and non seniors, all account types. And the financial software produces the total consumption and total accounts. And then we take those two numbers together and it gives us an average for the entire year. So that number right there is the city's average for three quarter and one inch residential accounts.
Thank you for clarifying. Yeah, thank you.
Information from the billing software that produces the utility bills each month. Okay. I'll move on to the next slide. I do want to point out a key difference on this slide before we start diving into the numbers and, and what the slide is about. This slide is a city comparison chart that takes the city of Smithville and it takes the water and sewer bill. And it compares it to other surrounding jurisdictions. One of the differences between this slide and the last slide we looked at is in order to have a fair and kind of stable comparison, we use 5,000 gallons in this comparison. The reason we do that is we have some jurisdictions up on the graph that charge in cubic feet. And so in order to do that conversion from cubic feet to gallons, it's easier to use a nice round number like 5,000 instead of 4,360 and, and 3760 that you saw in the last chart. So I put a note up there, 5,000 gallons is the assumption used in the chart. And so when you look at the chart, we, we put Smithville in the green box. So you could see where it's positioned among the other jurisdictions. And Smithville right now is about right in the middle for those charges. And you can see we have another few communities that are ahead of Smithville in terms of cost and other cities that are less expensive than Smithville for the utility charges. And we spent, we spent quite a bit of time gathering this data, inputting it and doing all the conversions since we have communities that do cubic feet versus gallons. Some communities charge different amounts depending on usage first 1,000, 2,000, 3,000 gallons, but we do all that work to create the chart. So with that, a 5,000 gallon user for the sewer and water portion, we about $115 a month at, at that 5,000 gallon rate. Again, sitting in the middle in the comparison chart.
So before we move on, I know, and we are on different budget cycles than a lot of these, but if you look at Carney's rates, they don't do winter averaging like we do. So if you fill swimming pool or water yard in the summer, you pay all of that in sewer. So we winter average that. So that changes throughout the year. Kansas City, which a lot of these municipalities also use for their sewer, just did a big bond project. So their rates are going to jump up as well in that last election. And just a reminder for the board and, and those in the audience, this is a self-funded utility. It's paid for by the utility itself. It is not paid for by sales tax or any other funds out there unless we get grants like we did for the raw water pump station and some of the other projects we've applied for. We can't pull money out of transportation dollars to pay for these improvements. If water and sewer improvements are required, they have to be funded out of this utility.
Yeah, I'll go with that. I know, I think Platte City gets their water from Kansas City for sure. I'm sure some of those others do as well.
Carney was getting some of it, but the rates went up. So they're using their aquifers for part of it now. But in this area, we're one of the few that do produce water and treat sewer. A lot of them tie into Kansas City or some other process. And I like how Black City has different rates if you're west of 92 or 29 or east of 29.
They do. There's a really small distinction depending on what part of.
And the unincorporate, I, I, I'd like to also see on here unincorporated Platte County and Clay County. Cause I know we've seen those water bills and they're fairly substantial.
Yeah. And some of that may depend on where you live on, you know, if you're with one district for one service, it could be different, you know, for your sewer. It just, it trying to select a city that has a resource that provides rates publicly on their website. That's one of our goals in building this because I get some, you know, I'll get some questions saying, well, where can I, where could I kind of replicate this chart or actually do this work myself? And so when we put this together, I put all the links in there and a lot of these communities have their own schedule of fees like we do, and they make their, their rates accessible and easy and transparent to look at. So you know, putting, putting the chart together in that way. So we know, hey, here's exactly where we got their rates. That's, that's one of my priorities too of the chart. So.
Yeah. And I think Liberty's number that you have in there for sewer is when they, I think they're just transitioned back onto their own sewer system. So that might be what they're paying for Kansas City and it might have changed now that they're on their own plant, but they're got almost a hundred dollars just for sewer. That's kind of.
$16, over $16 per thousand gallons of wastewater used. So.
I'm just curious, is it possible to find other cities that do all of this service themselves? So combine water, wastewater as far as their rates?
Oh, that treat, that treat the water and do it all themselves and just do the.
Call in-house.
Do the comparison. Yeah. Where the city's the provider of the water, the sewer and the trash.
Liberty is probably the most comparable for.
Kansas City. Yeah, we could, I can look at that and.
Curious.
I don't know if you know some of the answers.
I think, I think you could. That's a different thing.
I just look at sewer and water. Cause trash is outsourced.
I think one, I will tell you one town you can probably use is Trenton. They're a comparable size in population and I believe they provide all that service. I know it's one combined bill there. So I don't know if they provide everything, but they charge for everything.
We need to find one with 33 pump stations.
Different way than we thought of, of stuff. We've kind of had similar comparables. And that it's looking at it in a way that makes more sense from the utility perspective. We can take a look at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, there may be some cities up here that are missing, at least tried to put cities that are comparable to Smithville in terms of population and have some regional proximity as well and try to pull those into the chart, but definitely can plug in other cities.
I, I know we got the notice from Kansas City on Forest Oaks is going up because we pay them for that. So.
How much, how much was that increase as far as Forest Oaks? Do you know?
I need to go back and look. It's typically averaged around seven to 10% a year annually. For a while they were increasing their sewer rates 7% for years and years and years and years. But with City of Smithville, you know, recently we've had more aggressive rate adjustments. So, but Kansas City's been very consistent on that seven to 10% annually.
That's how they got to $93 a month on sewer. Yeah. It, that's if you're an apartment, you're paying 92.
Yeah.
It's not cheap.
To wrap up the, the water and wastewater sewer rate proposal, I just want to show you the, the budget process, what this looks like for considering these rates. On August 15th, we're going to have our first formal discussion of the operating budget and we'll look at the five-year capital improvement plan again. On September 5th, we'll have a second discussion if needed. So if there's more items or you know, more consideration about these rates that you want to address, we can address those. Definitely have time for that in September 5th and kind of tailor that workshop to your questions and things you want to get answered. And then October 3rd, we're required by Missouri state statute to hold a public hearing for sewer rates. And then October 17th, in conjunction with the adoption of the operating capital budgets, we'll adopt these rates via board resolution. So that's the, kind of the roadmap ahead of the budget process and how the utility rates get into it.
Okay, sure. We don't have it on the agenda, but. Any other questions for Stephen on number four? Before we move on to number five, we do have public comment card. Miss Bunch.
Thank you, Mayor. I do appreciate that. And that was an excellent presentation. Excellent. As I'm learning and taking. Christine Bunch, 1-8608 Primrose. Sorry about that. As I'm learning and taking tours and Cynthia was very kind to give me a tour of the water and waste plant. Boy, did I learn a lot and I definitely agree that they're going to need all the lab and equipment and everything and the lighting, but I do ask to include women's bathrooms. I do not believe there were women's bathrooms when we saw the urinals and the woman that was standing there does not have private restrooms.
I think you're thinking the street department.
Sorry. The, the sewage department.
No, the street.
Oh, the street.
Building in that department.
Okay. So there's women's bathrooms in the water and sewer. Okay, so there's women's bathrooms in the water and sewer. I I just want that to be checked on.
Oh, it is. Okay, so. I stand corrected. It is a generalist unisex, so.
So I ask for a women's bathroom. As we're growing, I do think uh for just humane purposes, women are working in the sewer and water, and I just ask for that to be um included in that budget. So I think that's that's great when you're asking for increases on necessities, and I do think that women's bathrooms is a necessity. Um the second thing, um and again, I'm learning, so I don't know if it was water district number eight or water district number nine, but I think it was water district number eight that buys water from Smithville. And I do believe that they are going to be considering looking for water out of Kansas City if this number keeps increasing. So I think eventually there will be a tipping point for them, and it's just something to consider. Uh if we lose a quarter of a million dollars, as I believe that's the number, but I could be wrong. But I just think if that tipping point comes, are we okay with losing their business of a quarter million dollars a year? Thank you.
Chuck, it's eight and nine, right? We have two water districts that we supply water to, right? And they get it at a discount, right? So if they're using up water at two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year at a discount of two dollars per thousand gallons, that water could be re-distributed to the system and actually save us money? Yeah. So it would also limit the amount of plant growth we'd have to have to, correct? Okay. Thanks.
Say say that again, Mary. So.
If we're selling them water at a discounted two dollars per thousand gallons and they're paying two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
That's two hundred fifty thousand dollars of water that we could sell to our regular customers that we wouldn't have to produce.
Okay.
That would actually save us a substantial amount of money. Because we wouldn't have to do the improvements to add the capacity to our system. Because they use a lot of water. Right? Two hundred fifty thousand divided by four. It's a substantial amount of money.
We 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 wouldn't get that money anymore though, right? I mean, that.
We went through our own system and we wouldn't have to increase our capacity.
Okay.
We would have to build a bigger plant as fast. I mean. You lead less water, spend less money on capital improvements. So.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Okay. Oh, before the power.
Here's the fees.
Yeah, it's under the. Uh I thought I gathered all screwed up here. Dad, bro. Yeah. That'll happen. All right, thanks.
Is there anybody online? I don't know if we asked.
Burman's on there.
Harman.
If anybody wants to make a comment or anything, anybody else on there? Question, or I don't know.
They haven't submitted. Typically during work sessions, we don't do much public comment.
Right.
That's okay. We allow it. Cyclone is on. Couple more over. Keep going.
All right, continuing on through the budget process, we'll now take a look at the rest of the fee schedule. Um this is our fiscal year twenty twenty-four proposed schedule of fees, everything else outside of the utility rates. So go ahead and get into that. Similar to the utility rates, uh we have our own specific review process for these fees. That process starts out with comparison research that our staff performs. So that's where um Matt Denton, our Parks and Rec Director, Jack Hendricks, our um Development Director, looking at other jurisdictions, uh what they charge for fees, and then also looking at our own programming and what it takes to fund those services and doing fee comparison research. That research is performed by all the directors of departments of the city. And so we compile that research and that becomes a basis for a fee proposal. Uh once we have that research done, we look at it internally as staff and um come up with our proposed fee changes, which is then presented to the Board of Aldermen for review in July. And then um as we go through the budget process, we look to approve that schedule of fees in October. And so with that, we'll start out by looking at our um Administration Department and the proposed fees in that department. We have one proposed fee change um in the Administration Department, and that is for uh the peddler permit. Right now, um we charge uh for a peddler permit to be acquired, we charge fifty dollars. That's for peddlers that do not hold a business license with the city of Smithville. Um with some pending um ordinance language and discussion that we're going to have about peddlers, solicitors, canvassers. Part of that proposal includes applying that fifty dollar fee not only for peddlers, but also solicitors. And I put some information about their, about the distinction between the two individuals when they have their permit. Peddlers are individuals that are going to go door to door attempting to sell a good or a service. They do not have a prior appointment. They just show up on your doorstep. A solicitor is going to be somebody that's a little bit different, individual that would go door to door attempting to obtain a donation without a specific prior invitation or appointment. So both a peddler and a solicitor who don't hold business license with the cities pay that fifty dollars. That covers the costs of background checks and licensing that it takes to ensure that that individual is legitimate and 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 can go around the city to do that. One of the items I do want to point out with this is uh we do have some solicitors that are going around door to door for educational or nonprofit purposes. That inclu- that could include um fundraising for the school, the Smithville Warriors. Canvasser. Okay. Good to clarify. I um for for solicitors that are doing non- that have nonprofit purposes, there's going to be an exemption furnished for them though. Um so um if you're going around door to door with the solicitation and there's a a purpose related to that, that fee doesn't apply. Okay. Um the next set of fee changes we'll look at come from the Police Department. And the first fee we'll look at is the dog licensing fee. Um you'll see here right now in the current column, we offer an annual dog license um at ten dollars or twenty dollars for an unaltered pet. The proposal here is not to uh change the amount of the license but to simply add a two-year and a three-year license opportunity for dog owners. So you'll see in the current column, right now, the city does not offer a two or a three-year license. And so we would offer those opportunities for those with dogs to come in and get those two and three-year licenses. The costs are simply going to remain at ten dollars per year or twenty dollars a year for unaltered. So you can see um one year at ten, two years at twenty, three years at thirty. The requirement in this case is if you do come in for a two or a three-year dog license, um you're going to have to show a vaccine certificate that shows the multi-year vaccine is in effect for your pet. Um veterinarians can offer that service. So if you go down to a local veterinarian and ask about that, um they can help arrange that. So this is really a convenience factor for citizens. So when they come in, they can take care of a license for three years. I have to come back into the city to take care of that. And then the next fee proposal for the Police Department relates to the fingerprinting services. So um there'll be times when citizens need to come in for fi- fingerprinting services. And right now, if you look in our schedule of fees, we charge fifteen dollars for those services, but it's not well defined what the fifteen dollars gets you. Um you can come in and complete those services and get as many fingerprinting cards as you needed that have the fingerprint on the card. So this uh specifies that we'll be charging ten dollars per card. And so um it really cleans up the fee and makes it definite on what you come in and get your s- fingerprinting service for, that you'll be charged per card that you need to come out of City Hall with. Next set of fees we'll look at are the Parks and Recreation Fees. And in looking at the Parks and Recreation Fees, um our proposed fee changes um pertain to rental options at the senior center. So uh right now, if you go, if you're interested in renting the senior center for your activity, you have the option of selecting a full day on the weekend from nine to eleven P M. It's a two hundred and fifty dollar charge for the day. Um what we're proposing to add is the option to do a half-day morning session and a half-day evening session, either one that you'd like to to select. About a six, six to seven hour session, depending on what day you pick. But it's essentially going to be half the cost of a weekend full day. The proposed cost would be a hundred and twenty-five dollars. All senior center rentals are subject to the two hundred dollar damage deposit to make sure the facility is clean after use. Just want to note that um in talking to Matt Denton about the fee, um it's important to note that the seniors do have the um uh senior center for three days out of the week. Um so those are going to be uh blocked off. Half-day morning rentals on certain days not going to be available because of that.
Hey, Stephen, who who goes through and uh verifies the nothing's damaged before they give the two hundred dollars back?
Matt, Matt has park staff that that's their their job after the rental period ends.
Okay. Thank you.
That may not be the right. Um with that, we'll wrap up uh the fee schedule. Um the schedule of fees uh runs along a similar path as the utility rates. Um they have an op uh essentially what we'll do is when we go look at our operating budget on August fifteenth, um we'll uh discuss those items and um move on to September fifteenth and seventeenth, like I talked about. When we reach August seventeenth, these fees, just like the utility fees, will be up for board consideration um with approval uh by you. So we'll have them on a resolution for approval. And again, if you have questions about these specific fees that we talked about, we can review those questions on September fifth during our optional budget workshop. Any questions on these fee proposals? A lot of these are housekeeping issues, but they're intended to offer some more options for customers, especially with the dog licensing and senior center rental options.
I think we're good.
Okay. The tip marketplace. Okay. Ready for the next, the work session item? Okay. Okay. All right, next on the agenda, item number six. This is our discussion of the commercial wastewater leak adjustment policy. I want to bring this item to the board uh for your consideration and a decision on what to do. Um so let me just give you a very brief backdrop of what brought this issue to the board, and then we'll open it up for discussion. Um so just to cover this, um we've had a policy now for over, well, since November of nineteen ninety-seven of uh taking care of leak adjustments in the city of Smithville. Uh we've had numerous ordinance changes to that policy over time. Um one item that happened last year is that uh pertains to um commercial leak adjustments as we had a tenant, which is Hillside Development, the account for the strip of businesses over there with one sixty-nine Cafe and um over there uh just south of here on one sixty-nine highway. They had a large leak in one of their two-inch water lines. Um once they found out that that was a pretty big leak and they had a lot of gallons that were getting lost, they uh worked with Hampton Plumbing out of Carney to fix the situation and replace the two-inch water line. I put in the staff report that they lost a lot of water during the um leak. In their billing cycles, if you add up January and February together, would have been over five hundred and fifteen thousand gallons of water that um was used during those billing cycles with a significant portion of that related to the leak. Um one of the nuances of our code of ordinances is that when um we come to you with our leak adjustment requests, resident requests must go through the Board of Aldermen. So you'll typically see on the consent agenda that residents will request leak adjustments, and you approve those on the consent agenda. One of the nuances is that commercial requests um by ordinance can be approved by the city administrator. Um and so in talking with Cynthia about this um request, and just to clarify, this is a request for the wastewater adjustment. Commercial businesses are not eligible for water leak adjustments. So this is just the wastewater portion. But want to come to unite for the decision on um what kind of procedure and approval route the board would like to have for these types of adjustments. Really, the options are um continue to have a city administrator approval authority. Or another option is to take these types of adjustments and um create a similar procedure is what we have for the residential leak adjustments. So um that's really what it is. It's a procedural question, how the board would like to um approve these adjustments.
I read through that, and and my thought is that it probably ought to mir- mirror what we do for residential. That way it's consistent.
Yeah. And and in doing that, you'll you'll get all the information like you would for a resident. You'll see all the billing consumption for a business. Um you'll know that um they have fixed their leak, that it was a legitimate leak, and that they have proof of documentation that was repaired. All of that is included as always in the residential leak. So by continuing that route, you would always receive that information.
Leave it to same.
Okay. So if.
We just wanted to make sure that you all were aware of that, and that those, as those come in, then we'll be bringing them to you. And it, we agree, consistency is what we need to be looking at, but want to make sure we're all on the same page.
And it it may involve um some edits to language and ordinances, if I'm not mistaken, Jack, but if that's required, we would bring that. We would bring that to the board. Okay. All right, we'll move on. We've got two more items here in the work session. So we'll move on to item number seven, which is the discussion of commercial winter sewer averaging. So just as a little bit of backdrop to this issue, um it's been over two years ago in March of twenty twenty-one, Board of Aldermen approved an ordinance which made changes to the winter sewer averaging process for new residential accounts. So before March, if you were a new resident to Smithville, you really had two options when it came to your utility bill. Um you could either elect to um really bring your own billing history in from the house and a previous friends residence you had and use that as an average to establish, or you would be billed um what I would call the volume method, which which is whatever water passes through the meter, that portion of water is also. whatever water passes through the meter, that portion of water is also going to be reflected on the wastewater bill. One of the big things when I got here in 2020 was fixing that and allowing the creation of a process that helps residents who come to Smithville who don't have an average. They could easily be doing landscaping or outdoor activities and get charged a very large amount on their wastewater bill. So we established through ordinance changes to language, we established a process for them to take the average for the city. Coming out of that, it, the ordinance detailed that residents will be averaged residential accounts and that commercial businesses are not averaged. And with this change in the ordinance, one of the responsibilities for our department is to perform the winter sewer averaging calculations. So this is really an update telling the board that with these changes in the language, next time we do those calculations in March of 2024, businesses will be excluded from winter sewer averaging and they will be billed volume each month of the year. If you have questions regarding that, I can, I can help answer them, but it's really an update to tell you that's what we're doing next year in March of 2024.
And just a question about that, what's driving that?
What's driving that is the change to the ordinance language. So like I said, in March, a couple of years ago, we brought in new language for residential utility counts, it's language that we borrowed from another municipality that established that residential accounts will be the only ones for, that will be averaged. And so it's our job to, you know, do those winter searing calculations each year. And so that was a part of the ordinance that was not enacted when we did those calculations. So it would be done next March.
We just want to make sure that you all are aware in case you have feedback or comments from folks. So we just want to make sure that we reviewed that in public with you.
Thank you. Hey, one item left here. Last item on the work session agenda for tonight is our TIF marketplace annual update. Thank you. As you recall, last year, the city was required to provide a five-year report on the progress of the TIF marketplace. And so in talking about that report and what the board would like going forward, this presentation is going to be provided annually and it's going to provide an update on the financial progress of the TIF district. So with that, we'll start in on the presentation. Just a quick district overview. The Smithville Marketplace TIF was adopted by the Board of Alderman back in August of 2017. Identified a geographical area about 66 acres located in the south here on 169. It was previously developed in 2009 as a large-scale retail site, but by 2011, during the Great Recession, there was no occupants and there was a foreclosure. In this update, we're going to go through all the projections that were provided for in the pro forma for assessed valuation of the district, the payment in lieu of taxes, the economic activity taxes, which are the sales taxes generated in the, in the marketplace. We're going to look at all those projections and talk about how it's actually performing. Just a quick summary of the businesses that you'll see in the marketplace. There's eight businesses that include a lot of fast food restaurants, major grocery retailer, and then also dental office. So all those businesses are open and running pictured there.
Jack, we got ten to finish on the final. I think Jim was doing inspection last week on T-Mobile. No more space to lease there.
Okay, so in the report here, the first item I'll address is the projections on the assessed valuation and what actual assessed valuation is in the district versus what was projected in the pro forma. You'll see in 2018 and 2019, that was the period in which businesses were being constructed in the marketplace. And so the assessed valuation really was reflective of the land value at that time. And as we moved into the tax years of 1920 and 21, those assessed valuations started to grow. The gray column reflects the actual and the orange bars reflect our projected that came out of the pro forma. In 2020, that gray column is significantly lower and that's really due to the timing of when the businesses came in and hit the tax rolls being a little bit lagging behind the timeline. But starting in 2021 and heading into 2022, those assessed valuation estimates certainly shot past the projections. So you can see the gray bars, which reflect the actuals, the 4.6 and 5 million for the assessed valuation surpassed 3.6 and 3.9, which were the projections from the pro forma. The city just recently got its update for 2023 tax year assessed valuation and it calls out the AV that's for the TIF and that amount was at $6 million. In the staff report, I noted that that, that amount of 6 million actually surpasses the, the plan's estimate by the end of tax year 2040. So in terms of generating pilots and property taxes, it's certainly well ahead of the projection that was provided for in the pro forma. The next section has to do with the pilots, which are the payments in lieu of taxes that are collected. Just a little backdrop on this process. So when the assessments are made on those commercial properties and the tax payments are made, the city is directly receiving those property tax dollars come in form of a TIF dispersment from Clay County. It's our job as the finance department to then take those monies and allocate them appropriately. We allocate some of those funds to the special allocation fund and some of those funds back to the taxing jurisdiction. And I put colors in the chart to indicate what amounts go to each fund and jurisdiction. There's a special allocation fund, which collects those monies, helps pay for the reimbursable costs and the debt service for the developer. And then the orange bars, those monies go back to the taxing jurisdictions. You can see there's some pretty immense growth in 22 and 23, which follow the growth in the assessed evaluation. Again, the jurisdictions receiving the property tax, that's driven based upon the growth and the increment over the base. So as the assessed value grows in that district out there over the base value of 52,000 that we saw in the last, the taxing jurisdictions are going to get more property tax. The next chart pertains specifically to TIF Eats, which are economic activity taxes. This is reflective of the sales taxes that are produced out at the marketplace. The jurisdictions that are affected here are those that levy sales taxes, which includes the city, includes the zoo district, which has a small sales tax in effect. Also includes Clay County and Smithville Area Fire Protection District. 50% of those economic activity taxes are peeled off and sent to the special allocation fund. And so those economic activity taxes are outlined here. Orange bars being the projected amounts and the actual TIF Eats being in the gray. Can't see the, the graph there, but on mine, that's what it's showing. You can see there's a little bit of lag between the projection in 21 and 22. And a lot of that has to do with the businesses in their opening timelines. But from what I'm seeing through seven months of activity in fiscal year 2023, those economic activity taxes are on pace to meet the projections. So last year was a little bit short with that amount, but this year collecting 336 through seven months, it's tracking pretty close to that projection to be at 687.
I'll just make a comment because you made, shared it in here. You know, one of the big tenants that they thought was going to go in did not go in, which would have generated a lot of that extra that we're missing, correct?
That's right, yeah, the tractor.
We're getting 100% of it because they aren't.
Right, that's true.
Yeah.
Yeah, they didn't locate in there.
Which was good that they didn't, but I mean, that's, that's reason the projections are where they're at.
Yeah, exactly. That's a really good point. You know, and with 2023, looking at this number through seven months, it's really good to see that we're tracking pretty close to that 687, even without that store. So that's, you know, together those two points, I think that paints a good picture.
Well, and then they expanded Heritage Tractor also, so their new build, their new build helped as well.
All right, the last piece of this we'll look at is the CID sales and use tax. And this is the 1% sales tax that's levied out there that goes for, again, goes, some of it goes into the special allocation fund. And then those monies, again, routed, routed to that fund on a monthly basis. The yellow bars represent the actual revenue and the blue is the revenue budget. In 2022, those actuals eclipsed the blue revenue budget of 315. And through seven months, we're on track to definitely hit that. We're at 225 through seven months on that sales tax, which would be projected to eclipse the 373 budget. And so that, that 1% city sales tax goes to help pay for the infrastructure and improvements out there. And it's really reflected through, I think, the quality and the, the construction of that, of that new and modern marketplace. Here's our conclusion on the annual report. This is really kind of the summary of the progress of the marketplace. So kind of similar conclusions last year, we have modern and attractive businesses that have opened in this redevelopment area. It's increased Smithville's commercial presence. Assessed valuation is certainly a plus, it's tracking well above the TIF planned projections as the business opened. Giving this, given the status of the area and the businesses that are located there, the sales tax is meeting the expectations. The CID sales tax also has performed well in the first fiscal year and we're seeing growth in those as new businesses had opened. And again, you touched upon it, Alderman Wilson, while planned businesses not constructed in the timeframe, we've had other businesses that have been completed since then, grocery store, hardware store, and the pad site. So overall, marketplace is performing well, financially up to expectations. And it's our job from the finance department to ensure that all the appropriate journal entries are made, all the adjustments are made that, that send the right amount of revenue back to the special allocation fund that they can pay their debt service that was issued last year. Questions on that report?
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank you for how this was presented. It was very easy to follow and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. Cynthia, anything? Thanks for everybody pulling this together for us. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Do a second. All of in favor of adjourning in the work session, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
Aye.